All right, let's call to give a call to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today is Thursday, July 17th. Pursuant to ARS 38431.2H, the public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to discussion. Members, any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may attend in person or by Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are at time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District one, District two, and District three, Antonori Cearal Supervisors, are present and in person. Today, we are going to go over the agenda items for next week's regular meeting, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Joe Casey, our Deputy County Administrator, to walk us through it.
Good morning, Chair. I was in the board. So, first thing, the Library District, there's two items, just the consent items, minutes and the demands. There's been questions on, there's no question, I don't move on the other district, which is the same thing. Okay? And then, on the, moving to the Flood Control Districts, there's no question on the first two. Flood Control District does have one item on the action, and that is to approve a purchase agreement for, for the Bisbee effluent, to buy property for the Bisbee effluent project. Yeah?
Yeah. So, we had asked, I think the last, we were talking about it, about how much was left for this project? So, you know, is it like two-thirds all the way completed, or is it still halfway?
We have this, there are slides, but the project is 30% designed.
So, it's just design stage?
Correct. We, we would go, so the next stage we have, this year, we would finish design, and then we would do, construction would be after we found funds for construction. It's about $14 million for construction, and so we would have to wait to find a grant for that. But the slide that's up there now, that shows that 2023, that completed in 2024, we did the design report and 30% plans. We have a, that was by a WIFA grant, I mean, a REPI grant and flood control funds. The city of Bisbee has a WIFA grant for $1.95 million, and that's to build the pump station to get the effluent from Bisbee down to the river. So, they already have that grant, they're already in the process of designing that. Then this year, we require the property to finish the design plans, we have to have the property to know where to put the recharge basin and final design, and that is going to be done with the America the Beautiful grant funds from the city of Cervista. They have that grant. It was a million dollar grant, and part of that grant is going for the design. And then, the county would buy the property this year, and then future construction would happen once the design is completed, and we have grant funds for the design. Yes, Flood Control District has quite a few properties that the Flood Control District owns. Correct. No, this is just county. And so, the property owner wants to sell all of it. So, once we find the location of where we want to have this charge, we could then sell part of the property. We could, you know, it's 90, about 92 acres, we would need maybe 10, 20 acres for the recharge, then we could sell the rest of the property.
Oh, 92?
I think it's 92 acres. I mean, that's just his parcels that he just wants to sell, so that was...
It's a recharge. It's not, it doesn't, it's not going to stink. It's just...
Currently, the, currently, the Bisbee effluent is discharged in Naco in the Green Brush Draw. So, it's taken it from that discharge point down to the river to recharge for the surface water. So, currently, in fact, where Camp Naco is, and where the RV park is going, the, the riff part, yeah, the riff development's going, that's, well, it's surface, if, right now, it's flowing on the surface. It's discharged right at Naco Highway on the Box Culverts, so it's a discharge at that point, so you can see the water flowing right now, and that is the effluent right now. We would comply with all, if...
What's the depth of the aquifer is that there?
10 to 20 feet. I mean, it's close to the river, so the...
So, when you recharge it, you're putting it almost, it's not like perking down through the soil.
It's, it would perk down through the soil because it's, it's not right at the river.
It's only 20 feet.
It's back a little. Some of the wells are 20 to 30 feet.
And about the filtration potential at 20 feet.
Because currently, that's what the city of Cervista does. I mean, they have their effluent that goes into recharge pump, and the city of Tucson on the Santa Cruz, almost all of their effluent goes into the Santa Cruz River, a surface flow, and if you walk along the Santa Cruz River and there's water there, that's effluent from the city of Tucson.
Okay, and how about paragraph, page two, paragraph two, I believe? And we see down in paragraph number four, Mr. upheld, reefed this, and you see San Pedro National Riparian Area. And if we could continue down, and we've got the, the next environmental, Sprinkas down in, in paragraph three, or item three, last paragraph, also Sprinka, and...
Kinko.
And then, I think, maybe the last item is where they just didn't want to hear from me anymore, and I was threatened with open meeting law violations and so on and so forth. So...
In a meeting?
Yeah!
How do you violate open meeting law in a meeting?
Well, we could talk about that when we have our open meeting law meeting.
All right, all right.
So, that'll be part of the, the regular meeting agenda discussion is added this, but since this meeting came up here, the point is, all of this stuff has to do with the Sprinka.
Right.
And we've talked about, to my knowledge, we have not voted on it, but we've explored not having the Sprinka or not recognizing the Sprinka, and so on and so forth. So, it is inconsistent, in my opinion, to keep going with this. This is the same recharge issue that, that we're looking at in 2022, isn't it?
I think it was item three, yes. But if you go to slide four or five that I had on the presentation for mine, the other caveat to the issue is the Gila River adjudication, and this last slide that I had, this, all those blue dots are water wells in Cochise County, and that red there, and the red is the San Pedro River that goes from Mexico up to Pima County, and then the Babacamari River, and that's the subflow zone of the San Pedro River. So, the recharge projects that we're doing, yes, we're doing on the low, or the upper San Pedro, but they are also helping for future adjudications with the Gila Water, and that's a state law, I mean, the water rights in Arizona are done by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. And so, this is to help, if we help increase the surface water flow, then it has the potential to help all those, there's 1,064 wells within the subflow zone, that's through the whole San Pedro River. So, this isn't just helping the Sprinka, this is to help the San Pedro River with the adjudication. 51 years.
Is it ever been settled?
They said yes. They say yes.
Sometime in the future.
Yes.
But, but, but those wells, so a lot of those wells, they're, they're the, they have claims, those well owners have claims in part of the adjudication, so they are
Documentation to remove every reference to the Sprinka out of it, and if we can't do that, then we're going to have to give them their money back. And so, this is where I was talking about the other day with my colleagues about, do we want to do what's expedient, and do we want to do what's right? So, this is another example of it. And there's, you know, one of these, one of these brands seems a million and a half, and here it is.
And that's for the Coyote Wash? That's going to help the flooding on Moston Road, yes. I mean, that project is out to bid now with the funds from, the WIFA funds and the REPI funds for the Coyote Wash project.
So... The base, I think, is reserved in basoons in the San Pedro River because of it being a BLM project and so on and so forth, I'm against it, because they don't have any right to it, and it doesn't exist.
And the base flow of the river, you know, the, one of the most senior rights, because of adjudication, its senior rights have priority, and St. David Irrigation District has one of the longest senior rights, and their claim has been somewhat perfected. I mean, they've been given a quantity, it's, you know, still in discussion until the whole adjudication is done, but they do have a senior right, and their senior right, they did get a pretty good preliminary judgment for their senior rights, for the St. David
So, until somebody can convince me that the BLM, actually, somebody can show the Sprinka exists, which means they have to show a proof of acceptance of jurisdiction by the federal government, and they have to show a letter from the governor at the time to the county saying this, we did this, okay? And they can't do that, and they also can't show that it was either purchased or ceded by the legislature. And that's why I say it doesn't exist. And so, it isn't up to us to prove that it does exist, or it doesn't exist, it's up to proponents to prove that it does exist, and they can't do it because they don't have the right protection.
And, and, I have, but my take is, you know, it's to help the homeowners and the wells that are along the San Pedro River for the whole river, not just the Sprinka.
Okay, to me, it's just a matter of, of usurping military money for environmental projects and stuff like that, and I don't think that's a good use for military...
And I think, and I think gives them a hammer to hit the fort over the head as a justification for suing them.
Illogical.
Fighting them and giving them a whole bunch of grief, as we saw by the letter from APM Day in the Armed Services Committee.
So, if that, for instance, if Tom had his way, there was no Sprinka, now it affects, you think in a negative way, all those, those blue dots that you showed, and that...
No, the Sprinka is just one claimant on the adjudication. I mean, the other, the, the adjudication is to the Gila River, so the San Pedro flows into the Gila River, so the, it's a surface water rights for the Gila watershed, which includes, you know, San Simone River flowing into the Gila River, and then San Pedro flowing into the Gila River. So, it's a surface water for the whole watershed of the Gila River. The Sprinka is just a minor part of that watershed, the, but it's the whole watershed, including the Babacamari.
This, this project, the, the key piece of this is that the fort is going to provide a grant to purchase the effluent, to get the credit for the recharge...
For the San...
For the San Pedro.
So, that they don't, so they either...
So, they quit getting sued by...
By the...
Right. So, that's, that's what their intent is. So, it's separate from the, the Sprinka, I would think it is.
Well, it's definitely related.
I, I get it's related, but I mean, it's, the project itself is not...
My constituents don't want it.
I know, I know. There's quite a few of them.
So, in, in terms, when we talk about redistribution from, from District two, and how I said, District one is almost always required to redistribute wealth to District two, and now, in turn...
You're getting back.
District two gets to redistribute sewage to District one.
It is, yeah.
It's not sewage.
Sewage, definitely.
Send it to French District.
Actually, it's actually not far, probably, just run a pipeline that way and pump it, pump it into the...
And also downhill the other way, too.
Yeah.
Downhill the least.
Yeah.
Could give it to Mexico, don't they?
And it, and it gets a lot, it's a lot deeper to perk, too, to get to the aquifer, than 20 feet. I mean, I don't...
Well, I'll, I'll get you the exact number on that. I mean, that's just for my...
325 feet, my water, 325 feet down. So, it's a long way to go before it hits the...
Instead of 10 feet.
Instead of 10 feet, yeah.
Or the actual surface of the water.
And I guess my question is, because you, I'm listening to both sides, it's like, how does it affect the fort? Because they claim that this is going to be...
How many...
If we don't do that...
Are they buying, how much effluent are they buying?
200 acre feet is the minimum, or, well, 200 acre feet is the goal, up to 600.
The agreement guarantees 200 feet, if we want to buy more than that, that they can.
Speaking of things that are completely illogical, buying effluent is completely...
My God, it just irritates the crap out of me, too.
It's a little...
I know. Yeah.
There, there's a market for it.
There's, there's a market for water.
It doesn't mean it isn't illogical, doesn't mean it doesn't do it just because of three lines out there, and that's the point that I was making to my...
The reason, the reason there's a market for it, though, Joe, is because...
It's sort of...
Exactly. They're driving, they're creating the market artificially by creating the crisis on the water side. So, anything that's got water in it is marketable under that. So, there's all these groups and the fort and everybody else that wants to get that offset. That's, that's why it's marketable.
Bisbee, the water pump, that's going to, that increases, I understand, pressure of being able, because their pipes are still, correct?
You mean the pump station that Bisbee's doing? So, the water's coming down to Green Brush Draw now, it's down, but no, this is to pressurize the line to get it to the river, because to get it to the river, you're going...
Yeah.
And so, that's why, that's why they have their grant, is to construct that. It would just stay in Green Brush Draw. I mean, right now, it, it still gets to the San Pedro River, it's just flowing when it rains, then it's just flowing when it, in the Green Brush Draw. Bisbee's, Bisbee's already got the grant, I think they've already trying to get the Yes.
You're not going to recharge anything unless it rains or snows.
Correct.
This will be interesting come Tuesday. Any, any other...
One thing I do want to point out is that the 300,000, you know, if the county decides to purchase this property and not move forward with the, this project in the future, it could always sell that property, so it's not money wasted.
Right.
Yeah, we're not putting a conservation easement on the property.
We can't do that yet.
Yeah.
Any, any other discussion on that? None? All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Walker. All right, next, the regular meeting agenda that we just got the...
It's the one that gave us that.
So much for the binder. I just lost the van, oh, here it is. It just popped, it just popped up. Okay. All right, so, uh, gee, we've got two presentations scheduled, one from Rob Hollister for 32 years of service to Cochise County. I assume Mr. Hollister will be retiring.
Is that what that is? He's a, he's racist, so he helps, he does a lot of volunteer.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's necessarily retired, it's just, he does a lot of volunteer work for the county, he's recognizing the support he's provided over many years for our radio system and, you know, the sheriff's office.
And we got the Audit General coming down to talk to us about our 23, 24 audit. Is this the one that was going back and forth with the...
If it is.
Okay.
So, yeah, they'll, they'll be here to, to give the presentation and the outbreak from last year's audit.
All right. And then, the consent agenda is pretty basic, it's, it's just the minutes, and then, oh, PSRS, okay, got it. Any comments on the consent agenda? All right, and then next would be the county assessor. I'll bring the assessor up.
Good morning.
So, please explain to us item number three.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is an action that is taken every year annually. What my office does is we have to process personal and organizational exemptions annually, and there is a deadline for filing those exemptions of March 1. And this specific statute, ARS 4211153 Bravo, basically, if a, if a property owner files that application late with my office, it gives the property owner the right to petition the board to have that exemption approved after the deadline. And what we do through practice is receive these late filers, and we compile them all, we review them and approve them, make sure they meet the qualifications for the exemption, and then we submit them to the board all at one time, so they're not coming, we've got 190, 109 of these, we bring them all at once to the board, so the board can approve them in one shot.
So, what are these for? Are these for like people over 65, or disabled veterans, or what, what are they?
There's basically, on your handout there, you should have a breakout, there's basically 105 of these are individuals that are either widows, widowers, or disabled, or veterans that meet the statutory qualifications for the exemption. There are four that are organizations, these are churches that missed the deadline that we've approved and we're submitting to the board. So, ultimately, out of all the exempt assessed value in the county, we did have a total net assessed value of, of exempt property, 131,144,144 was what our, our amount of exempt property value was. We're adding to that an additional $571,001 through these 109...
What's the net loss in revenue, do you know?
That's four tenths of 1% loss in assessed value, so whatever that would represent, it's a miniscule amount, but it's one of those issues where they, these properties, these applicants have been screened, they do meet the criteria, statutory criteria, the only thing is they file after the deadline, and so, we're just submitting them to the board for approval as late filers to, to get their exemptions approved.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Can you explain that?
You bet.
All right, next up is court administration. We have agenda item number four, to approve court improvement funds between the county, the Arizona Spring Fort, and I'm assuming the county is, we have the, oh, guess we do.
There you go.
Appreciate an explanation.
Sure. I'm Rita Shipley, the Budget and Finance Director for the Superior Courts, and good morning, supervisors. The two grants that we have on the agenda for approval, the first one is the Court Improvement Program, and this is funding that provides 60% wages and ERs for dependency coordinators, so this position, and it's currently filled, this position works with Department of Child Safety, the parents, the judges, the goal of this program is to keep kids out of foster care and reunited with their parents, and they work with all types of programs to get training for the parents, anything to keep the kids at home and out of the dependency system. The rest of the grant, we get $12,500, that covers a contracted attorney, and that is the dependency alternative program. So, the goal of that program is an attorney will meet with the parents and see if there is another family member, some other option that can take care of their kids so that they're not taken away from them, and to avoid going through the judicial system.
So, so both these amounts, the 49K and 46K are grants?
Yes, yes. So, the first one I talked about was the Court Improvement Program, so that is for the dependency portion of keeping kids out of the foster care system and reuniting them with their parents. The second one, the Court Security Improvement Grants, this is a competitive grant that we apply for each year from the AOC, and then this program will provide funding to help us meet our, the court's security standards that the AOC Supreme Court has implemented, and they look at, they do a risk factor analysis, they look at facilities, screening process, so the processes we're good on, and the training, it's the facilities that we have been applying for, and that includes things like getting the ballistic protection materials. This is phase four of the project, we've completed the security stations, they've done ballistic material around where the entries are. This last piece will cover the judicial benches, the judges' benches, and the justice courts that will cover Benson, Wilcox, and Bowie, and then all those stations will be completed. You have any other questions?
Mr. Crosby. I looked with the juvenile corrections, but I was wondering, do you have any statistics that relate to foster care and, and the potential for incarceration, either as a juvenile or adult?
Yes, we've got lots of statistics that we can provide to you.
Off the top of your head, what can you tell?
I don't run those, I, I don't deal with the statistics. This position that's being funded, though, they run all those statistics, and they work with the CASA program. So, yeah, we have lots of statistics, and they report on that in depth, but I personally do not know those.
I would mind seeing the presentation about it, because, and let's see, the eighties, in the eighties, the recidivism rate in the juvenile hall was 99%, and if, if somebody got into the system, they were going to be in the system their whole lives.
Yeah, I know, on the juvenile side with probation, they've invested heavily in the diversion program, so those recidivism rates have come down tremendously.
Same.
Yeah. We'll do, we'll get those.
Good. Any others? All right, next up, very hot topic, elections. All right, we got to approve PCs, one Democrat, one Republican, and then...
Is that the other one? No, I mean, you want to find out that.
Oh, so that's the only one? Just the two PCs? Good. All right, we don't have any...
Wait, wait, wait. What'd you say?
It's just the PCs that is considered...
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, maybe go to this one, that one. Gotcha, gotcha, I was confused, now I got it.
Yep, all right, so seven is demands and amendments for operating transfer.
No question on that one, then we move into the public hearings. Got a lot of public hearings for the meeting on the 22nd. Got one for the, you know, approving a liquor license, the other one is for a franchise agreement with Midville Telephone Company, and then there are six items from Development Services that will require public hearings as well.
This franchise agreement, I assume, includes Mr. Crosby's new language? All right. What's that?
That's what I like.
Franchise agreement? It's better than fair. All right, and then we got Development Services is next. That looks like, oh, did you have any question, Kathleen? I'm sorry.
Figured it out. I'm glad that they put whether this is going, District three, District three, District three. I guess this is a good time for me to ask the question of Mr. Taylor that I have a meaning to put in an email, but I think I can ask you now, is if in the next week or so, well, next two weeks, if you could sit down with me, I want to see what the zoning is for Douglas, you know, where the Port Ventura is going to be, and then going up one eighty-one. Because I just want to get a feel for what we have industrial, what we have for rural, what we have for ag, what's maybe even already set up as a, what do they call it, free enterprise, which I think was Arden, you know, in an international zone, or, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, when we start doing this, you know, do we just have a really good hands-on on what we're going to start rezoning for industrial, or what our plan is, other than just having somebody come in and say, hey, I want this industrial, and it might not make sense because it's too close to residents, but it might have been great over here. But I know it's what they own, and what they're going to be able to buy, right? But I just like to get a good, solid kind of idea of what that whole area is going to look like, if you don't mind.
Sure, whatever, whatever you would prefer Supervisor Gomez will be available.
Because I know that I talked to Free Port Two the other day about how maybe giving a sign up for a hospital, and they were like, where would you like to put it? Wherever we have land, or why don't you tell us where you want it? And I just, I just, that's why I want to get a good idea, like, and planning in the near future, what we can look at. I don't know if anybody else wants to sit on that. If you do, you're welcome. Thank you.
Anything on the public hearings?
Let's read this real quick. That's it. See, we got, that's. Shit, from what I can see, and the rest of it is just, if more, I didn't get that page either.
Right, industry, light industry district, what does that mean exactly?
The light industry, that's the zoning?
Yeah.
That's moving from RU four into the light industry.
Which means just some practices, or?
I'd have to get Matthew back over for those questions.
Sorry.
Supervisor Gomez, the rural district is predominantly for rural uses, residential, small service uses. It may benefit a small area, whereas light industrial is hosted heavy commercial and industrial uses, which of course could include truck stops, warehousing, storage facilities, manufacturing, processing, sure. Correct. And Supervisor Gomez, once the agenda is posted, all the supplemental material will be there. And if you'd like for us to send that to you separately, we can do that.
I've been there thirty-two years, and so I just want to kind of get a feel for what's happening, where this commercial truck stop warehouses need to go right now. So, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, item sixteen is adult probation, approved proclamation declaring the week of twenty-twenty-six July as pre-trial probation and parole week in Cochise County. And that does what? What does that do? Other than, again, as we talked earlier, make some more touchy-feely stuff or something? I don't know. What is that? Is it doing something, or is it just the?
It actually, for our department and our employees, do. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary. It is nationwide, all of the states do it. And it is really a way to celebrate first responders, or anybody who has a job that is, does community or community service. So, it's a full week of our department celebrating our employees. Part of that is also to do some wellness.
Okay. So, there's the proclamation.
Yeah.
No comments?
No cookies.
All right, thank you.
We will have cookies.
All right, next, next item, number seventeen, is the IGA with Cochise College, which I'm sure Ms. Gomez probably have a, you want to start, Lieutenant, explaining this, or?
Yes, exactly the same. The only thing that changed was we got the college to raise Sergeant Hudson, because they pay for his salary. So, last year, I think our audit cost was approximately twenty thousand out of the county budget. They stepped up and added more money for his overtime. So, now we project only about five thousand. So, the only difference is we're spending fifteen thousand less.
So, this is the training academy that went from Douglas and gave to your city, one of the many.
I suppose.
Wasn't you on there?
Light Douglas.
So, so this pays just to give this guy the train?
Yeah, he's the one that runs the academy. He's a sergeant of the sheriff's office. And so, they pay his salary, but his overtime, we've split before, and he gets a lot of overtime with the classes and doing paperwork and stuff. So, the college just raised it by eleven thousand, sorry, yeah, eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars. They raised it.
I'm sorry, I was going to tell you, I feel, but anyways, okay. Oh, that's good that they're paying more than us.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Got any additional?
I think it's a positive thing that.
It's less money.
The Law enforcement academy in the county, which I hope will help with.
Do they get post-certified coming out of there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All the local agency, service PD, us, Bisbee, Douglas, we have Graham County, Santa Cruz County. Our academy is cheaper. So, before, we used to send to Tucson, and we paid a lot more money.
Sure.
So, it's, don't quote me on it, but I think it's like one-third the cost that we pay to send them through our academy versus when we had to send them to Tucson, not to mention the driving and, you know, the fuel for the county.
Tuition-based initially program, just to, if they want to become a police officer, they just apply to the college, and then they pay?
Definitely sponsored by an agency. So, we hire them first.
Oh, you hire them first?
Yeah.
Well, I just can't go in there and.
I mean, for a year, we might be able to arrange something.
Become a deputy, get post-certified, you have to, you have to, no, what, so, I didn't know that. I didn't, okay. No. I think it's fifty-five or something, right? Isn't it?
To my knowledge, there's no.
There is no age restriction?
The Board of Patrol does, like federal.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was like fifty-five.
No, if you can pass the fitness test and pass the medical, then.
Which I would fail both of those probably. No, no, but, but, I, it's interesting that you have to be hired first. So, you guys are taking a gamble on the guy passing before he passes? Or is it just, I'd say a done deal that they're probably going to pass anyways, and you know, it's just the.
Yeah, we do a heavy background, obviously, to make sure that they, we do like a reading comprehension test, to make sure that we know they're going to pass the academic portion.
Okay.
And they have to score, you know, but we don't take the minimum. We set a little higher standard.
Okay.
And then PT is the same way. And so, there's stuff in place to, you know, mitigate that. But, I mean, I think I've been connected to it for the past five years, and I can think of, I mean, maybe we have a one percent, like, we had one guy that dropped out because his wife decided she was going to move back to New Jersey or something, and it was like a last-minute decision. He said, here, they're coming.
So, are you paying their salaries while they're in class?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, they, it's roughly about five months.
What about Spanish proficiency? How close was that academy to the border?
Four months. Pretty close.
Well, it's considered a border city, too.
Well, you know what, everybody, this is America. Learn Spanish.
I know the free word.
He's got to look somebody in Spanish, that minimal, that should be, that should be a minimum standard. You need to be able.
You can do it on your iPhone now.
Yeah, that's what some deputies do. They do that translation.
Yes. Yell on the iPhone and turn the volume up and yell back?
Yep.
You know, yeah, let us the, how long, let me see what that says.
All right.
And then you have other counties that participate?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Because we're, to my knowledge, I think we're the cheapest one in the state, Cochise Colleges. So, we do get, we do draw from, like, Santa Cruz and Graham County. But there is a.
That's a long way to drive to go to class.
They put them out, yeah, they just built, yeah, they just built dorms. And so, they're putting them in the rooms. All right, at least you didn't see Crosby's blackout, right? Making a joke.
I got a sense.
I know.
So, all right, so we good on that?
Yeah.
All right, cool. Then, thank you, Lieutenant, for coming in and.
Yeah.
Are you here for anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, cool. All right.
All right. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, we go to the elections, elections, part of the action items. There's two of them. There's two IGAs for running the election for Naco and Wilcox in the November election. And then there's a resolution for appointing vote centers. And we have, Mr. Volante, if you guys have any questions on that. So, you see, you look up, well, Christopher's coming off of an election night, you know?
Well, thank you. It was a baby election. So, we call it a baby election, but we're doing good. I'm surviving. So, right now, so registered active voters was about seventeen thousand, eight hundred something, and we're currently about fifteen percent. So, a little, little under three thousand, five hundred voters.
And you know the biggest problems? There's no paper, there's no radio station, there's just like Facebook.
Yeah.
So, when you talk to, I mean, people didn't even know there was one on the left side.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll do better for the general.
Yeah, I do think there's a lot of publicity around it. It definitely is a special election. So, the Secretary of State, as well as our county PIO officer. So, I know, but usually the primary.
Since we're having the jail district election countywide at the same time as these other elections, what is the cost, I guess, to Wilcox School District to, from your office to support their school district election? Is that what this IGA is?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Antonari.
They should save a little bit of money, right? We're doing them a little bit of a favor.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yes. So, they do have, they do have a cost, however, within your exhibit. Yeah. So, with Wilcox, they have approximately four thousand, five registered active voters. So, times that by point seven five cents. So, their fee will probably be approximately around three thousand, maybe a little additional. And then Naco has significantly less. They're at seven hundred and ninety-five. So, they would still, they would meet the qualifications in Exhibit A about eight hundred. So, their cost is a little lower, but they still have to meet. So, it'd be eight hundred cost for an invoice for Naco. I've Benson and Benson and, well, Doug, didn't we hear from Douglas?
Did you think they want to do mayor control?
I do believe something about a mayor. That's the city of Benson, okay.
No, Douglas, too, wants to do something that's like changing it. But I think the charter requires them to vote in May, which I don't understand why they're doing it in May, but I guess that's part of the charters, to do an election in May. And then.
Technically, under Arizona law, you're supposed to adhere to the consolidated election dates as the legislature has created them. But if they're a charter city, there might be, I know that City of Tucson likes to have their own days, but in this county, we prefer to adhere to the consolidated election statute. So, there's only a certain amount of days every year you can hold an election.
And May is one of them?
I don't know.
Yeah.
May is. So, there's March and May. There's March and May.
And they want to change it so that's mayor control and something else, and at-large instead of ward, which would probably be better. I think you would get, I believe it's going to be better because nothing's working in Douglas for the past four years. You don't think so, at-large works?
No, you shouldn't have anything at large. Everybody should have a geographical district, even, in my opinion, state representatives, but they don't.
But what's hard is when you get, like, in the same, like, those same, even though they have term limits, it ends up being the same hands for the past twenty, twenty-five years.
Does Douglas have term limits in city council?
Yeah, it does.
Wow.
And, but the mayor has no power, and no power.
Is he on the city council?
He is, but the way the charter is, is that he has to have four members plus his votes, like.
Like the tiebreaker, is that the deal?
Yeah. And, you know, when it comes to administrative, like, there, wants to fire, put somebody on notice because he just can't do any of that. So, when would they have to notify you? They probably already timed, so it's maybe.
So, there is a call to election procedure through Arizona State Statute, two hundred and ten days for a call of election. So, prior to that, May or March elections.
So, but when they have it in May, because their charter, they would have to change in their charter to have it, any local elections in November?
I'm not familiar with the City of Douglas's charter. I would want to read their charter first before I comment on that, because, but what we do know is that we have, we publish a call to election, like Ms. Vaughn said, two hundred and ten days, and then they have a thirty-day window in which that they can send the county their official notice of election. Typically, the governing board has to vote to go and call the election, and then they send it to our elections director, and then we send them an IGA.
I mean, it would be cheaper for them to do the election in November with everybody else than it would be to have you go do a special election just for them, right?
Is it, do they pay them?
We don't have to, I know. They could pay out of the pocket, but.
Tell them to do it in November, or they do one.
You could do that, too.
I've already reached out. I've already heard from the city attorney from the city of Benson. There has been some discussion already about changing the mayoral term from two years to four years long, and they want to hold that election in March. So, we've already heard from.
And you still, they still want to have the mayor on the city council?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the structure of the city of Benson, but that's all I've heard. So, that's.
The better way to go is if you're going to have somebody called the city manager, they should come and go with the mayor. The mayor should not be on the city council, and you have an odd number of people on your city council. That's the way to do it. And then, and then you don't have, you're going to have the city manager camping out for twenty-five, thirty years.
Exactly. Exactly, that's the most powerful.
All right, so, so, let's see. So, the IGA with Wilcox, then we have the vote centers for the November fourth election. And then the last one is IGA with Naco School District as well. That's Kathleen, that's your.
I know.
Anything there? All right. I think we're good.
Naco has to come here. Are they going to do it?
So, in terms of vote centers, Supervisor Gomez? So, we do have the, so, all the vote centers, we have the eighteen vote centers.
Is it on quick, can you do it quick?
Yeah. And Naco, that's not, right in Naco, so they would go where, come to Bisbee.
So, these are all locations of the voting center?
Yes, ma'am.
And you could put on agenda quick. Yeah, it's, it's, okay.
All right.
And the school superintendents all know that this is a consolidated election. So, the individuals that are on the active early voting do receive an active early voting by mail. And then the individuals that would like to vote in person on the fourth can go to their vote center, to any vote center across the county.
Anything else from Ms. Vaughn? Thank you, madam.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Good job this week.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is Health and Social Services, this eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty, I'm assuming is a grant.
Yes, it is. Chairman, supervisors, this is just an extension for an additional three months. This grant is a competitive grant, and so we have applied. It just hasn't been awarded. So, they're extending from July one through September thirtieth.
Would you mind us what Health Start has to do with?
Health Start is our home visiting program. We're countywide. We go out and visit, provide education to young moms and children up to the age of two. We educate on nutrition, safety, car seat safety, postpartum education, breastfeeding education. um postpartum um education, breastfeeding education. And it's all home, home visiting based.
It's up within the youth and not being a senior citizen?
No. Just two years and younger.
This reminds me, I was watching this thing on History Channel that Henry Winkler's got on, it's called Dangerous History. It's kind of funny. And it starts out with uh kids in the sixties and seventies, which we kind of
Yeah.
dovetailed out. And they had these uh erector sets that had all these sharp things on it. And they had one that had actual real nuclear material in it. And they had another, and it was just the kids in the sixties and seventies didn't have all these safety features and all, you know, they didn't have any of the the special door locks to the cabinets or the the things that kept you from sticking stuff in the outlets. None of that stuff exist existed. And these kids grew up during a a period of time where it was basically if you, if you survived into adulthood, you know, you were prepared to go out in the world because you you had none of this.
I played with mercury in my dad's office.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It was just all this stuff back then that we didn't, we didn't know about, but uh it was kind of funny. It's a funny show to watch. And I thought it was kind of interesting to watch all the crazy stuff back then. And it was talking about the lawn dart game. You know, it's flinging the lawn, the lawn darts and and then the the metal slides with with no, with, yeah, with no, you know, no padding, no nothing.
It would burn.
Yeah. So it had all that stuff. It was pretty funny. So I guess we've come a long ways.
Things that would spin you out. What were those things, Mary? But they would spin you out. You would hit your head.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We're good. I had state federal legislation. Uh, oh, the only thing I have is the rescission bill passed the Senate. Now it's in the House and it's got nine billion in cuts. Do we have somebody that is going to go through that? And see what the, because it takes out a lot, especially the Medicare Medicaid stuff, which may relate to the health department. I didn't know if you got somebody that's going to go through that.
Don't have anybody working on it at this time, but I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's just, I I just, just to be proactive in case uh there's something in there that's going to hit us because it is, it is nine billion in cuts, nine point two.
And isn't there also real cut to rural hospitals too, I think?
They, well, they added, they added fifty, I want to say fifty million back in to offset the impact of the Medicaid revenue loss from cutting Medicaid.
To rural hospitals.
Rural hospitals. Yeah, that was the, that was the Murkowski compromise. And then she didn't vote for it anyways, which to me is an interesting thing. So they were all crying about, because what's happening is there are a lot of people that are going to lose Medicaid, mostly illegal aliens or people that are physically capable of working um that are going to lose their Medicaid. Hospitals obviously bill when these people come into the hospitals, they bill so that they count on that revenue. So when these people go away, that's going to be lost to the hospitals due to the lack of these people going to the hospitals and and then billing. Uh, so they put money in there to offset some of that, not all of it, but it is, it is an offset.
That was state, you're saying, right?
Federal, federal, federal. It's in the rescission, but yeah, it's not a lot of money, but you know, what what they're trying to do is uh there are people obviously receiving and and it's not just medic, medic, Medicaid. It's also uh the food stamps and
SNAP.
SNAP and all these other, other ones, especially single individuals are really going to be investigated. Right? So not so much the families, but but if you're a single guy, it's like twenty-eight years old and you're getting food stamps and you're getting Medicaid, you're probably going to lose it. Yeah, you're probably going to lose it because you should be working and whatnot. So that guy, if he was going to the hospital a lot, you know, for whatever reasons, that that business for that hospital is going to go away. If it was in a rural part of the country and they rely on that ru- routine visit to bump up their income by billing Medicare or Medicaid, rather, that's going to be a loss. So to offset that loss, they're putting additional funds to support rural hospitals in the bill. But it is not going to replace, obviously, because then it would be irrelevant to the cut to replace a dollar for dollar. So it's like one to ten or one to eight or something. But there is going to be other, other impacts that related to that too. So I don't know if it's directly or indirectly related, but we might, we might see it. And we might hear from the rural hospitals too, when they see a decline in revenue due to less Medicare or excuse me, Medicaid patients coming into the hospital. That's all I knew. And of course, the legislature's on a session, so nothing going on there. So that's all I had. I don't know if anybody else saw anything and watched the news of what's going on. Nothing?
But I could review my future agenda.
You want, you want to talk about them now? Yeah, we can talk about them then.
Okay.
Yes.
Wait for the meeting that's upcoming on.
He just, this is just to advise Joe and this, which, when she comes back to consider putting them on a future work session.
So we've already talked about flood control slash sprinkle. And uh I don't necessarily need to talk about that.
Yeah, but you kind of want to provide the scope to that, right? So the scope is I would think an information session for us on everything that has the word sprinkle in it. Right?
Well, if if the grants, in in other words, if everything, all the money that we're taking is dependent on the sprinkle, then the language needs to be taken out of it that has to do with the sprinkle or we need to give the money back.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. So we need to know what, what, everything that we're involved with legally, I guess it would be, the IGAs, grants, whatever, that have the word sprinkle in it. Or some.
Or that ration.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And and uh and make it dependent on the Ford or the so-called R E P Y, I don't remember what that stands for, but basically it's it's the Ford's free money that they pass out.
And is there a way to detangle?
You've got to start.
From the, from the sprinkle to de- detangle from to where we get rid of, we get rid of the county's recognition or involvement with the sprinkle, but are there ways to maintain some of the other aspects of it without the sprinkle? I mean, just.
As as part of that, would you like a, you know, legal analysis of Mr. Crosby's?
As soon as you're ready.
Yeah. And and I've given you like thirty pages or something like that just today.
I'll extend this to Denise. Denise is our attorney who oversees water law issues. I'll make sure I get this through when I go back to the office and uh she could be in touch and we schedule an IGA that works for everyone.
Yeah.
Schedule a work session.
Yeah, so we'll analyze it and then get it on the calendar after.
Okay.
Uh, number two, open meeting laws. Which I I think that we're excessively restricted more, more restricted than what does the statute say and 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 so on. So we need to figure out my three points generally, that open meeting laws are to prevent votes behind closed doors and people have a right to that. Um, but I I'm not convinced, for instance, that uh that every email on my personal email is public if it has anything to do with accounting. I don't think it is. But, you know, somebody would do that, yes.
Uh, that, that is, um, I don't mean to interject, but uh that specifically talks about the public records law, which is completely different than the open meeting law. But if you would like, it sounds like you want a legal opinion from our office, sort of talking about uh the bounds of the open meeting law per se.
So, so for example, I talked to Mr. Cray about this, right? So uh we've been trying to get this open meeting thing set up because I think we have the opportunity to, I don't know what the legal thing is. I guess we'd have to file a lawsuit. I don't know. Is there such a, could we do a petition for review to the courts to get an opinion? Or do we have to actually sue to get an opinion?
Have you seen what's, what was written by Kerry Goddard way back when the La Sota sent that? Have you seen that?
Haven't seen that.
Okay, then I'll make sure that.
So the point, what I raised with Mr. Cray is, is for example, say the three of us want to go to lunch. Right? Just go to lunch and just chat about.
In a polo dress.
Yeah, it just some, so that is an opening law violation, is the way it's interpreted right now. Anytime the three of us together are in one spot, I disagree.
Or the two?
Or two, I'm sorry, two. Anytime the two of us, two or more are together, I disagree with that. I don't think that should be considered. And the fact that we have an AG that's very potentially adversarial uh and looking for a way to come after us, you know, that gives, gives them the the ability to go. And then under that rule, we're kind of on the hook out of our own pocket to many times defend ourselves against that, right? So.
And and it's like when I, so I get say uh a really interesting, great piece of news on a port of injury. I can't disprove it till.
Yeah, she's got to send it to Sharon.
Share it. And then a lot of times.
The Wolf thing, for example, right? We couldn't share the Wolf Resolution, right? I couldn't say, hey Kathleen, take a look at this and you know, tell me what you think. That's an open meeting law violation, which I don't think it is. And I don't really think it is. And we're not, we're not, we're not doing anything actionable. Right? We're sharing information with each other and I don't think that should be precluded. And that, if it is, that's why I'm saying we should sue or get a whatever.
A declaratory judgment.
Yeah, or something along those lines to to define that because it is specifically onerous for supervisors in counties with three supervisors. That's the problem.
It is. It's, it's miswritten.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't address that. Because everybody else had, well, not everybody.
I think the counties have more, more members on the board. They can go up.
See, a lot of counties have only had three. I was surprised.
Half of them.
Like all of Echo is only three.
Yeah, half, half, half of the counties.
The counties. And they find it the same way, you know.
It's just, it's just that, that I think due to court cases, not necessarily what was originally written in statute, but I think there's been several court cases and lawsuits over the years that there's been sort of creep of the definition and expansion of that definition that created this more encompassing definition of an open meeting law violation. But I think it's time to push back on it.
Do this, like I had a, some email on something and I replied, I answered it, but I wanted them to know what I said because this one person is constantly sending stuff to us and commenting on what the other one said. So in a sense, right there, not knowing what she's saying to you know, supervisor, I thought, and then, you know, so it gets a lot of misinformation because then it was said, well, you said this. I didn't say that. No. So the train that uh or the paper trail that can be created so that we all know what we're saying and what can sound force gets fractured by this open meetings.
So I think the first, uh, the first step, the first death step would be to get a memo from our office. And we can sort of lay out what the open meeting law says and all the different certain exceptions to it. We can talk about um what the legislature's intent was. It might help to solve some of the questions and perhaps we could turn to a presentation from our office. We could sort of.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but right there, like when we first came into office and we got, I got the letter from Mr. Cray about us, you know, hiring La Sota after you guys committed, said, ah, we can't be involved in the meeting. That private page letter to me was threatening and bullying. I couldn't even respond to them and say, hey, did you get this letter? What do you think this? What are we going to do? Should we meet? How are we going to counteract this? Should we do a press release? Should we?
Oh yeah, that's the other example, right? With the, we were doing the jail thing and, you know, we, we were getting outmaneuvered because the we could, yeah.
Press is the loop.
Under, under, under the open meeting law, if there were to, you know, if there were to be communications that constitute or trigger a meeting, then they would, they would have to be ratified in an open meeting at the next, thank you.
But see, this is a problem. So I was, or I don't know, they were, but I was told, obviously, you, you, you um you had an infraction on the open meetings law because how could you decide this decision so quickly? So therefore, you know, we think that you must have, and and I'm so right there. That's the problem. If I am being threatened and I want to say to these guys, say, hey, did you get this letter? How do you feel about this? How should we react? That was, that ability to defend myself was completely taken away from me. Because I can talk to them and everyone will say, no, you can't talk. We couldn't even say hello to each other at that time.
I mean, back to your point, you mentioned with the press releases, right? We were getting outmaneuvered because other individuals were able to autonomously put press releases out and then we obviously you didn't want to put something out. I didn't want to put something out. Tom didn't want to to upset either of us because we didn't know what but we couldn't talk to each other about putting press releases.
And so that's three weeks for us to be going. It was already moved.
So do we want to continue this discussion in this meeting or?
I was suggesting that a work session.
Yeah, let's set the work session because again.
I wanted to give you examples.
Sure, sure, sure. I appreciate, I understand.
But Paul's where this has been a problem since we took office. All right. And and that we've been trying to get some kind of legal action on because again, I think, I think it's being overinterpreted.
So then we'll set the work session, then we'll include the legal analysis and guidance memo from the county attorney along with discussion on, you know, a lot of stuff we been brought up now to see, you know, which way we want to go, uh potential executive session.
Yeah, probably executive session for that too.
Mr. Casey, I would maybe, if you could give our office maybe a few weeks just to sort of get that all together. There's a, you know, we're very busy right now.
We did tell Cray a couple of times already that we were going down this road. So it's not, it's not a.
The third one.
Okay.
It is the health department.
Oh yeah, we need to do that one too.
And uh I I'm just going to give.
Sharon already got the word on that.
So it passed COVID stuff. And so I have this detailed question. Who has relatives or friends that got sick from the AIDS vaccine? And uh talking about, you know, this, this is a twenty twenty-four, but it's got to be even worse now. Okay. And so this is, this was a grant that that was accepted that I voted against for one point nine million dollars. And this is why I am afraid that uh doing what is expected just to get the the money is a mistake. And so this included, it was amazing. They voted for it many times. Comply with the existing or future directives and guidance from the secretaries.
Without knowing what they are.
Regarding controls COVID nineteen. Assist the United States government in the implementation and enforcement of federal orders related to quarantine and isolation. Amazing that they just voted for it. Okay. So on the health department, what are you looking for for the work session to cover? Okay, well, for one thing, that seems that either have cloned, aborted, fetal cell or they are experimental. We should not have anything to do with that. So two more points. Nobody knows the long, long-term effects of the vax. I'm against socialist medicine. The private sector can take up the slack that the county would get out of it. Uh proponents on both sides of the issue accuse the other of misinformation. Therefore, I don't feel confident that I could know the truth with certainty having to do with all this COVID vaccine stuff. As somebody in a position of authority, I'm not going to endorse something that might turn out like Agent Orange or something that messes people up. And so here's, here's a, a, a definition of uh reduced burden racial, ethnic communities, American, African-American, Latino, indigenous, Native American, Asian, and all these people of color have a disadvantaged marginalized group, people that are otherwise adversely affected by persistent poverty, poverty or inequality. And all this, all this stuff was to help these underserved people, which is really wonderful unless you're messing them up.
All right. So we want to have a work session. I think that we should continue that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, but provide, could you get him a list of topics that you want to address in that work session?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But you're again, cloned, aborted, fetal cell.
But just shoot him, shoot him, shoot him, shoot him, shoot him or Sharon or whatever, both. Just the list of items that you want to include in that work session.
And you have the work session request form?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. All right, anything else?
There's, there's another agenda item.
Oh.
So the jail district.
Oh, the jail district.
There's another jail district. With the uh, the owner of rep will be coming out and giving a presentation on the twenty-third.
Okay. All right.
So.
You talking about the special meeting?
The special meeting. Yep. And then the campaign, the, the election, the election July twenty-fourth.
Okay. All right, that's that should be routine.
I don't know, it's pretty close.
Okay, so this has been like, you two, Mr. Supervisor? Okay. I would like to understand how the sixty percent you know, Scottsdale is doing about the, you know, the tax, you have to have sixty percent. Does that have anything to do with this? Because I'm getting so much back and forth with. So is that something we can do in a work session?
Can I answer her? I can answer, right?
Well, I, like, let's, because this involves a legal.
Yeah, we should probably do.
Litigation, let's put this off.
Okay, I was asking, are we going to, we can't.
We're keeping, we're keeping an eye on it.
We're keeping an eye on it.
Yeah.
But right now it doesn't have any impact on us. Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Even though people's, Kerry Joe is saying that it's going to change the way they use them. Okay.
All right.
The court system, it's a court case.
Yeah, yeah, it's a court case, but both.
Okay. So when will we talk about the protocol down the road? Are we talking, meeting about that at any point in time?
We can have a work session. We can have a work session through the jail district in some time. Um, I'll, I don't know what the calendar looks like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll monitor that if it gets to the point where we need to have a work session, we'll.
We'll, we'll continue discussions and talk about this.
It won't be, it won't be resolved until afternoon.
Okay, so.
It has no impact on the road that we're on right now, but in the future, it could call.
It doesn't impact us, right?
It could, it could, yeah, it could, so we'll, we can.
Look at as much of that jail district legislation as I possibly could, and it was not, sixty percent was not in there.
Okay.
Right, that, that is the opinion of our.
Okay. And then, of course, we did say we're gonna do a session on the port of entry, right? Because I'd uh, like to talk about possibility, do this, see if we can find the funds to do a strategic plan so that it it has a good starting off, and then also to form a port of authority board. Usually, I've spent almost ten million dollars in the past three, four years on this effort. The county has, won't. So I don't, I want, it was, we've spent that much money, we need to be really, and what I've heard from a lot of people is the county's got to get involved at this point and lead it.
So you're looking for a port of entry work session?
Yeah, and and using, and and the economic quarter of one ninety-one, so those two kind of would have got.
Together.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else? Guys, good. All right, let's call it a day. We'll adjourn.
Next meeting is?
Oh, Tuesday. I'm sorry, is the general, well, that's the library district, the flood district, the jail district, and the regular state.